Good evening. Welcome to Hamlet City Council Regular Monthly Meeting. We're glad to see everyone here tonight. Beautiful weather. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order and we'll call former Councilman Mr. Tony Cluess up to do our invocation tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'd like to congratulate Marcus. I understand he got married and all from a condolences to his wife. Let us pray. Almighty Father in heaven, today we give you praise for all things, Lord. We thank you for the beautiful weather. We thank you, Lord, for this time of the year, Lord, when the rain has come and the flowers are budding, Lord. We pray, God, tonight that you would touch each one that's in this place. Pray, Lord, that you'll touch this council to make wise decisions, Lord, decisions guided by you and directed by you. We thank you, Lord, that you put people in the place where they should be to make the decisions that should be made, and we're going to give you the honor, the glory, and the praise for all things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Cluess. Council, you have before you at this time the agenda for tonight's meeting. I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. Are there any changes, additions, deletions that need to be made at this time? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You also have before you tonight the minutes from the, both the regular and the closed session on the April 12th Regular Council Meeting. What are your wishes on that, Council?
Leave to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. Any changes, additions, or deletions to those minutes at this time? If not, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, we come to comments from the attendees, and we do tonight have three people that we know of who would like to speak. The first one I'm going to call on tonight is retired Colonel Ed O'Neill, Jr. And Colonel, if you would come up to the microphone, please. We're certainly glad to have you with us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Bayless, members of the Hamlet City Council. I'm Ed O'Neill, Jr. I'm coming before you tonight to request your support on an issue that you have previously passed a resolution on in July of 2014 regarding renaming the Hamlet VA Clinic after my father, Command Sergeant Major Edward O'Neill. He died two years ago this last week. An effort to name the clinic in his honor was started, and of course, with your resolution and with the support of other political leaders, but it has faltered. And truthfully, I talked to Representative Hudson's office, and he said that they had contacted several veterans organizations in Washington, DC, and they had got support from several, but one objected. And upon doing a little more research, it appears that there's a personal conflict with an individual that has kind of percolated up into the national organization. But I submit to you that that conflict has nothing to do with serving veterans. It is, in fact, an interpersonal conflict and really has no place here. And for that reason, I've started a petition, both online and a hard copy petition, to move this forward, and I plan to present thousands of signatures to Representative Hudson and other leaders to say, "Look, let's set this aside and let's provide this honor to Command Sergeant Major O'Neill." My dad moved here with our family in 1973 while he was still on active duty and served his last three years in the Army here in the 82nd at Fort Bragg, and then retired, and we made our home here and farmed, and he was very active in the community. In the mid-eighties, he started this effort around trying to get a community-based outpatient clinic here in this county because it would keep veterans from having to drive all the way to Fayetteville to seek routine care. Obviously, this is a large catchment area. There were a lot of World War II veterans. At the time, there were even some World War I veterans. And to drive, you know, 60 miles over to the VA clinic, the traffic of Fayetteville and all that sort of stuff, having a community-based clinic just made a lot of sense. And he was very tireless in fighting to get that effort, the political support it needed to move forward and have it sited here in Richmond County, and as a matter of fact, not too far from this very location. So I know I have your support as a council in the form of your resolution. I'd ask tonight that you also sign on this petition with me, and I'm going to continue this process with other leaders like yourselves. I'd also like to perhaps leave a copy, if it's all right with the city attorney, to leave a copy here in the city's office, and however that may work. But I'm simply asking that we get these signatures and ask that the VA clinic be renamed in honor of Command Sergeant Major O'Neill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'd call Ms. Amy Nguyen up. She has some comments for us tonight. Got a lot of good things going on in town.
Hi. I'm here to tell you all about the upcoming Main Street Yard Sale sponsored by the HBDA. It's going to be on Saturday, June 4th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We're going to be selling booth spots down Main Street. It's either open to businesses or general public can buy spots. They are $5.00 each if you buy one by this Friday. Then they go up to $10.00 each. You can buy multiple spaces, and we're looking for, you know, people just to sell items from your garage, basement attic, normal, you know, yard sale kind of stuff. We've probably sold eight to 20 spaces so far, and the goal is just to get people downtown, have fun. The businesses will be open. Jones on Main will have their breakfast buffet for people who'd like to stop in there and get some food. So that's what we've got going on. Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
And you buy slots for that, Amy?
Yes. You need to go to see Trina at Second Timearound Consignment to get those.
Mayor and Council, I will need to...
Just to let you know, I will need to contact NC DOT to let them know that we will be closing that section of the street in conjunction with the event. They're always wonderful to work with, and I don't think they've ever had any objections.
Very good. Thank you. And at this time, I'd call up Mrs. Bernice Owens to discuss our very own Olympic competitor for this year.
Good evening, Mayor Bayless and Council members. I'm here to give you all an update on our little gymnast lady from Hamlet, Richmond County. This Saturday, May the 14th, at 5:00, the vacant lot beside the gym on Hamlet Avenue, we're going to have a fundraiser for Ashton. And the reason it's at 5:00 so late, she doesn't get out of training until 3:00, and she has to drive the other side of Charlotte. So we're going to have, we're going to have hot dogs, and we're going to have drinks, and we're going to have cake, and we're going to have raffles, and we're going to have laughter and chatter. We're just going to have a good time. Ashton is going to autograph photos of herself. I think we're going to have speakers. Yeah, we're going to have speakers, and just a lot of things are going to be going on so that we can push her on up the road to Rio. July the 15th, she'll be going to San Jose, California, and if she's chosen there, then she will go directly to Brazil to train. No, she'll go to Texas and stay in Texas, training until the Olympics are in Brazil. So you all come on down and let's see what we can do for her. And I want to thank Chief Waters and also Chief White for helping us. Thank you so much. And a lot of people have helped. A lot of people have donated, and they've called and wanted to do things, and it warms my heart. But anyway, we have good people in Hamlet and Richmond County, and I love all of them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. I also have a couple. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that has any comments for us? If not, we do have a couple of comments that we need to make up here from the bench for... You had one on...
Yeah. The other thing we have going on, the 2016 Train Day, this is going to be Saturday, May the 14th, and it's going to be down at the Main Street Park, which is at the bottom of Main Street. It's going to go on from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Bring out the kids. There's a special thanks to the National Railroad Museum and Hall of Fame, Locomotive and Caboose that's down there. The Hamlet Historic Depot, Railroad and Local History Displays, Sidewalk Chalk Drawing going on down there. The Richmond County Amateur Radio Club, CSX Transportation will have their number 34 Ford Fusion Race Car down there that day. The Operation Lifesaver, North Carolina Rail Safety Program will be going on, and they'll be down there. Music by Jimmy Reeves, and they'll have lots of food and entertainment. If you need any information on this, you can call the Hamlet Historic Depot at (582) 0603. And that's the Train Day going on Saturday, May 14th, at Main Street Downtown Hamlet.
Thank you, sir. So many good things.
I got something else.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me just keep going.
That's all right. That's fine.
The Seaboard Festival Committee, they have one more meeting coming up. We wanted to go ahead and talk about it at this meeting because we won't be on live camera again until after that meeting. So they have two more positions open on the Seaboard Festival Committee. One is a planner and one is a day of. And I'm not sure if my name got in the pot, but I signed up for the day of, so that one may be gone. But if you want to do it, please do it. Let me know. I'll just come down there and just give time away anyway. So their next meeting is Tuesday, the 17th of May, at 5:30, and that meeting is at the Visitor Center. Again, that's the last meeting until August, and then they'll start getting together and discussing all the needs, wants, and what have yous for the festival that day. If you want to be on the committee, please call (910) 557-5570, or you can call City Hall and ask for the email address or contact information from there.
And Jonathan, that's multiple positions on day of.
Yeah, multiple positions. So if you, you know, if you want to do it, please, please, please come out and do it because they need all the help they can get, and they do not mind it. Also, get your early applications in if you want to have a booth or something set up at the Seaboard Festival. So, now, I think I'm done.
Thank you. And I do have one item of good business for this. Our hard-working friends at the Hamlet Public Library are putting together a cookbook slash memory book. They want all your favorite recipes, as well as your memories of the bygone days of Hamlet. Vintage pictures are also going to be included in it. You can pick up the forms at the library, and the deadline for returning the recipes, et cetera, is July the 1st. But the sooner you return the forms, the better it is for them. The target date is tentative, but it's hoped the books will be ready for sale for the Christmas holiday season. So anyone, please, if you've got really good recipes, or you have any good memories of Hamlet or pictures or whatever, please go up to the library and pick up one of the forms and get it filled out. Thank you so much. Is that all we've got right now for that?
Leave it covered for now.
All right, very good. At this time, we will be having personnel recognitions, and the first call will be to the city manager for our new tax collector.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to recognize Jennifer Turner, the new city tax collector. Here we go. Jennifer started a few weeks ago, on the 27th, when she was sworn in after Gail Wise retired after more than 24 years of service with the city. And Jennifer actually, we scheduled that day because Jennifer wanted Gail to stand beside her as she was sworn in. It was a really nice little event. But although the tax collector position is hired by the city manager, the position is older than the council manager form of government itself, and some of our ordinances basically state that the office of the tax collector still needs to be appointed by the city council. So as a formality, I would just like to recommend that you vote to appoint Jennifer as the tax collector.
I'm so moved to do that.
I have a motion.
Second.
I got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
And we will take care of some other business later on in the program for closing out the end of Gail's reign.
That's right.
Okay. This time, I'd call on the police chief to make his personnel recognition.
I'd call Sergeant Skylar Dover up, please. Skylar just got promoted on April 20th to Night Shift Patrol Sergeant. Want to welcome him aboard to our leadership role at Hamlet Police Department. He is a 2012 graduate at Richmond Community College. Well, had the pleasure of being assistant school director to help instruct him. I'm proud of him. He's done a good job with us. He comes from Wagerham Police Department, and I just want to thank you for your hard work and dedication to the city of Hamlet and the citizens.
Good to have you. That's my main comment. I want to thank you again for giving me the opportunity to work for such a great department, and you really are a great chief, great person, not only to work for, but to work with.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to have you with us, George. Thank you, chief. And this time, I'd call on Chief White with the Fire Department for personnel recognitions. Did you have one tonight?
No.
You did not? Okay. Very good. This time, we'll move along to item number seven, which is the presentation of the fiscal year 2016-17 budget message by the city manager, Mr. Aberneth.
Honorable Mayor Bayless and city council, in accordance with the local government and the local government budget and fiscal control act, I have submitted before you the fiscal year 2016-2017 recommended budget for your review and consideration. The budget balances at $8,96,000, $8,96,560, which is a 3.4% increase from prior year. I certainly want to thank the mayor and the city council for providing to staff some very much-needed specific direction, which was used to guide us when making these recommendations. You've been extremely helpful, and I really appreciate that. In summary, the budget is a plan that presents financial information for each department, and it outlines the fiscal operations for the city for the upcoming budget. The approach for the 2016-2017 budget was to continue with a conservative budget structure and use basic business principles to guide decision-making. We calculated revenue estimations in a manner that were purposely increased to reflect more accurate levels based on prior-year actuals and trend models, and this was done to prevent large gaps in budgeted revenues and actual revenues. Listed below is a makeup of the general fund, Powell Bill, and the enterprise fund. The total is listed at the very bottom, and the general fund is made up of $5,146,285. Powell Bill, which is used for street patching, paving, and roads, is $245,880. And the enterprise fund, which is our water sewer fund, is $2,704,395. One of the major priorities of this budget was to generally beautify and improve the city. Additional funds have been included in this recommended budget to demolish the former AMP building located here in downtown Hamlet. Improved horticultural activities have been initiated through this process. A part-time horticulturist has been hired through this process, and additional part-time horticultural employees are included to help beautify the trees and the grounds around the city. Employee compensation and benefits have also been a priority for continued improvement as well. Employee raise recommendations came upon the completion of a salary study that found that our salaries are a little bit lower than some of our neighboring local governments. So the recommended budget does include a 1.5 salary adjustment to all employees effective on July 1st. And the budget also includes additional money for employees to receive a 2.5% merit raise upon the completion of a satisfactory performance review. The recommended budget also includes funds to begin a continuous longevity pay plan, where all employees will be given a certain percentage based on the years of service that they have with the city. As healthcare costs continue to increase, we still are able to absorb those costs and to pay 100% of the premium for our employees and retirees. It's a great benefit, and I'm really proud that we're able to continue to do that. Even with a slight increase in our health insurance costs, we're still able to provide the same health benefits as last year. Replacing important vehicles and equipment used for the delivery of service to our citizens was also a priority. Several vehicles and key pieces of equipment will be replaced to improve our service delivery. Supporting community agencies continues to be a priority. The city continues to make financial contributions to nonprofit agencies in the community, and those agencies include the Richmond County Crime Stoppers, Literacy Council, New Horizons, Richmond County Senior Games, and the Richmond County Human Relations Council. General fund revenues and expenditures total at $5,146,285. It does represent a, on the revenue side, it represents a $163,000 increase from last year. The primary sources from these revenues came from utility franchise fees and sales tax increases that have increased over the last few, or the last year, as the economy has improved slightly. The recommended budget proposes no increase to the current ad valorem property tax rate, which is 66 cents per $100 of valuation. The current tax rate is projected to yield an amount of $1,720,000 in property tax revenue for the upcoming fiscal year. The total valuation is projected to be $281,537,417, and that's a 1.79% increase from prior year at our most accurate estimation. And the ad valorem revenue-neutral property tax rate would be .6536, rounded to an even 65 cents per $100 valuation. Included in the budget message is expenditures by department for the general fund as well as the enterprise fund. Some of our capital outlay items include a new police patrol car, in-car camera systems, a new sound and video recording system for the city council chambers, lawn mowing equipment for our ball fields, improvements to the library, replacement, annual replacement of garbage cans, radios, vests, and assault rifles for our police department, upgraded security systems for city buildings, and an additional employee in the Parks and Rec Department to expand current programs in the future. Powell Bill funding is funding that's allocated to communities throughout the state, and it's collected from motor vehicle fuel taxes and distributed to local governments. Of the total distribution, 75% of this distribution is based on population, and 25% is based on the number of miles of streets maintained. Our projected distribution is slightly over $200,000, and it's always around that amount, slightly growing maybe by 1,000 or so every year. And the Powell Bill budget balances with expenditures equaling the same amount. And that breakdown is $12,000 for street patching, 10 for contracted services, 12 for sidewalks, $11,500 for curb and gutters, and $50,000 for street resurfacing. The enterprise fund is the account for our water and sewer system. Revenues in the enterprise fund total $2.7 million for 2016. It is a $107,000 increase from fiscal year 15-16. However, a $92,000 fund balance appropriation is needed to balance the enterprise fund. It's a large amount of money, but we do have a significant amount in our fund balance reserves, and we should be perfectly fine with that. As far as capital outlay is concerned for our enterprise fund, we have a Ford F-150 Ford Ranger for the wastewater treatment plant, a hydraulic pavement breaker, a dump truck, a new tandem trailer. And the enterprise fund budget also includes a variety of useful projects, which include replacements to several pieces of equipment at our wastewater treatment plant, as well as a caustic tank replacement project. The general fund fund balance is estimated to reduce to $1.4 million if revenues are received as estimated and expenditures are spent as appropriated. We always plan to spend more than we do, and we always plan to receive less than we actually received, although I'm trying to be a little bit more accurate on those revenue estimations. This would reduce our general fund balance percentage to 28% under those circumstances, but the available fund balance is anticipated to be well above the local government commission's recommendation. Having adequate fund balances are important to ensure that the city will have enough funds to absorb any kind of revenue shortfalls or unexpected expenditures, as well as cover any unexpected failures in equipment. To conclude, I must say that the direction from this city council thus far has made an effort to improve employee compensation to more competitive levels and replace equipment necessary to help our employees do their jobs even more, even better, and to also improve city programs. My staff and I, we have the responsibility to oversee the collection of revenues from and on behalf of our citizens, and in exchange, we will try our best to provide them with the needed and desired services as efficiently and effectively as possible at your direction. The public hearing for this budget is scheduled during the June 14, 2016 Regular Monthly Meeting at 7:00 p.m. The budget ordinance may be adopted after that time, and any person wishing to make comments or ask questions about the budget may do so at the public hearing. The proposed budget is available for public review at Hamlet City Hall, and it will be posted on the city's website, as well as notice will be given to the Richmond County Journal, and it will be published thereafter. Certainly look forward to updating you all, Mayor and Certainly look forward to updating you all, mayor and city council, and the citizens as the year unfolds, and I'm really excited to see the progress that this council is about to initiate. I must extend thanks to the mayor and the council for collaborating with one another and working so well together, providing direction, input, and establishing goals throughout this process. I also wish to recognize and commend staff for their invaluable assistance. It's been with great enthusiasm that I praise their efforts as they continue to impress me on a daily basis.
Thank you, sir. I did want to make one comment. After all these years that we've been looking at upgrading the audio and video, we have now learned that this money will not come out of our city tax dollars. That there is a fund available, and we will have plenty of money in it to do this. So, I'm well pleased with that, and I won't say how pleased I am with both the staff and the council on how well they've worked with the budget this year. I think we're in excellent fiscal condition, and I appreciate that. Other comments, council?
Yeah, I had one thing. We were talking about the additional employee for P&amp;R. Did we ever discuss the needs of vehicle for that position?
I don't believe that we did. Counsel, a new vehicle, like a new Ford Ranger or truck? I don't think that we did. I know that we've discussed the need for a position and...
And we've discussed the need for a new lawn mower and trailer for that department, but I don't remember a vehicle.
Don't they have two vehicles up there now?
Not sure. That's why I was asking.
They...
I thought they had two pickups.
Jerry had one.
There were two unless that vehicle was transferred to another department for other use.
We bought one of the used forest trucks to put up there for Jerry.
Did they keep that one for P&amp;R?
Yes. Supposed to. That's what it's signed to.
Was that not the one we were gonna take from Doc when we gave him the van?
Yep. There's still two.
There's still two?
Yep. It's a...I want to say it's maybe an early 2000s model Ford Ranger and a late 90s model Dodge Ram? Or no?
No.
Say I'm wrong.
One of the military.
No, it's one of forestry service.
A forestry, yeah.
Okay.
F-250.
That's right. So, there are still two trucks available.
Should be good there then.
And that one, of course, is big enough to pull those trailers and smaller stuff.
All right. Good deal.
Mr. Lancy, did you have anything at all?
He was concerned with the vehicle.
But we have one more budget work session, so any questions that you have, email me or call, and we can go over this again at that time on May 26th at 5:30.
Nothing other than this is just a presentation. It's not to adopt.
No.
No. Yep. And just to give you some background, I have to present my budget, and I'm supposed to present a budget message at a meeting of the council prior to June 1st, and the budget message and the recommended budget has to sit for 10 days before the budget ordinance can be adopted by the council. And the budget ordinance every year must be adopted prior to the end of June 30th every year for the next fiscal year.
Mr. Bayless, I know the meetings that we were having prior to this meeting, to me, helped, one, keep my schedule tightened up, and I like to see sometimes if we can continue with some of them, because two weeks down the road, you know, it's hard to find the time, as we've tried to schedule another meeting. If we can come up with almost a regular basis for me prior to discussion, not only on budget, but on ideas and future plans, so we can put that into work.
We can do that. A lot of cities do it. As long as we get everybody to agree on it, I'm good with it. Mr. Morpheus is good with it.
I'll do whatever you all want to do.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, but this time we'll move along to new business. Item number eight is consideration of ordinance number 2016-04 to demolish two structures better known as Monroe Garden Apartments located on Earl Franklin Drive. Now, due to the complexity of this code violation issue with one apartment being occupied, allied code enforcement has worked closely with our attorney, Mr. TC Morpheus, to follow the required guidelines needed to relocate the tenant and then remove the structures. The ordinance to demolish the two structures presented to the council, consideration adoption is the next step in the progress...in the process. So, what we have before us tonight is an ordinance to demolish these two buildings. What are your wishes, council?
I'd say move to approve.
I have a motion. Louie? Yes, Mr. Morpheus.
And I just want to provide a little bit of extra explanation beyond what our code enforcement officer put. One of the apartments is occupied. Under the state statutes, our minimum housing code, we can get an order from magistrate and small claims court to have the person removed. If we get to the point where it's time to demolish the structures and person still lives in the structure, we'll do that. And this ordinance you're adopting authorizes Mr. Emery and I to proceed. I just didn't want there to be any confusion about that.
Right. Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Do I have any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Thank you. Item number nine, public hearing regarding the proposed subdivision ordinance 2016-05. At this time, I will turn this over to the attorney for his comments and his recommendations.
And again, I know I said this in my email to council and staff, I want to thank Gail Strickland for all the work she did and working with department heads to get the draft together. I wanted to get my changes to you sooner, but it just...things always have a way of catching up. I did want to go over just a couple of changes. There's nothing of tremendous substance that's different than what Gail has put together, but there are a few things that the statutes require. Want to make sure there aren't any questions about that. The other thing, I believe you said that there is not currently a subdivision ordinance. Is that correct, Gail?
Repeat that, I'm sorry.
Tammy looked before she went on vacation and could not find anywhere where there is an adopted subdivision ordinance.
Right.
So, my recommendation is going to be that you adopt the proposed ordinance tonight, and then in June, there are some policy questions about how you do subdivision ordinances and subdivision regulation. And I'd like to get a little more guidance from you all, so maybe there's another round of amendments we want to do, but I think it's really important to get something in place tonight.
Okay.
So, that's all right with the council. Really, I only had three changes I wanted to point out, and the others are just very minor. On page three of the ordinance, I added in enforcement and penalties provision. This is basically straight from the statutes. It's all the things you can do with zoning and a little bit more, going to court, you can issue civil penalties, get an order of abatement, things like that. There's some other provisions specific to subdivision, and if they sell lots illegally in an illegally-created subdivision, there's some things you can do. Let's see here. Our ordinance on page...sorry, Marcus. Okay. Let's see here, on page...well, it's further in here, there's talk about financial guarantees. That is, the way subdivision process normally works is the person comes in and they get preliminary plat approval, and that's either with the city manager's office or at the planning and zoning board. And after they get that, they can then put in streets and whatnot. Once they have all the infrastructure in, then get final plat approval and sell lots. That works real well for us, but it's hard for developers, because they don't have any way to make money while they're putting in all these expensive roads. So, what they do instead is they can give us a financial guarantee, and our ordinance, as it's written, requires 125% security, and that's 125% of the estimated cost of the infrastructure. And once they submit that, then they get final plat approval without putting in all the streets and things. That's fine. That's allowed by statute. I really encourage cities to have that. We also had language dealing with a warranty, and it required that they have an additional maintenance bond as part of the warranty. That is, you get everything done, and then for a year after that, you get to...you have to pay some money to guarantee that the infrastructure is done right. Unfortunately, the general assembly took that authority away last year, so I've taken out that. There is some other language in here, but those are the two big things I wanted to flag for you all. If you have any questions, either now or after the public hearing, I'm happy to address them, and I know Gail is as well. Thank you. And the manager's made a good point, and this is something I quite like. As I understand it, the basic ordinance is modeled from the Rockingham Unified Development Ordinance. So, the goal is, if you're a builder in Richmond County, you now have the two largest municipalities having ordinances that are very similar. So, again, it's an effort to be a little bit more business-friendly.
Is there anyone here tonight in the audience who has any comments regarding the subdivision ordinance? We are in a public hearing at this time. Counsel, do any of you have any comments regarding this at this time? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the proposed ordinance subdivision 2016-05. I'd ask for a motion on that.
So moved.
Have a motion to adopt. Have a second. Do I have any further comments? If there are no further comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ordinance is adopted. At this time, we also have before us, as we do every time we do one of these, we have the adoption of a consistency statement, and I would ask your wishes on that.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adoption. Consistency statement is adopted. Okay, at this time, we have...we've come up to item number 12, which is...deals with the former tax collector leaving, and I would ask Mr. Abernathy's comments on this before we approve as to what we're doing.
Yes, sir. The annual settlement upon vacancy of term is basically a report that's...well, technically, it's the same report that Ms. Wise or the tax collector submits to the council at the end of each fiscal year, but when a tax collector leaves at the end of his or her term, they have to submit this report to you, and this is up to April 27th, Gail Wise's last day. There will be one more presented to you at the end of this fiscal year for Jennifer Turner's term from April 27th to the June 30th...to the end of June.
So, hers went from April 27th, and Jennifer's will pick up April 28th.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yes. That's correct. So, what we've got here is a settlement through April 27th.
That's right.
And hers will pick up. She'll give us from April 28th through the 30th of June. So, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the disclosure.
So moved.
Okay, I have a...
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Any further discussion on it? If not, all in favor say aye. Item number 13 is the tax releases for the month of May. You have that before you. You will see the releases that we have there, and these are as per the county.
Yeah.
And you can see what the issues were on some of them, so I would ask for a motion on the tax releases.
So moved to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion on tax releases? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Okay, at this time, the mayor has several proclamations to make. We have several good things going on, as usual. The first one that I have is a recognizing police week and peace officers' memorial day. Whereas Congress and the President of the United States have designated May the 15th as peace officers' memorial day, and the week in which it falls is police week, and whereas members of the law enforcement agency of the city of Hamlet play a central role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Hamlet, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression and intimidation, and whereas the Hamlet Police Department unceasingly provides a vital public service, I, therefore, William Bayless, Mayor of the city of Hamlet, call upon all citizens of Hamlet, upon all patriotic civil, educational organizations to observe the week of May the 9th through the 15th, 2016, as police week, with appropriate ceremonies which all of our citizens may join in commemorating police officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. I further call upon all citizens of Hamlet to observe Sunday, May the 15th, 2016, as peace officers' memorial day, in honor of those peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Witness my hand and seal the city of Hamlet, North Carolina, on the 10th day of May, 2016, William Bayless, Mayor. And I might also comment that on the 12th, which is Thursday, at 11:00 AM, we'll be having a service on the steps of the old courthouse, and I will be speaking, so look forward to seeing everyone there. My next one is Older Americans Awareness Month. Whereas the city of Hamlet joins the nation in recognizing Older Americans Awareness Month, May 2016, and whereas the city of Hamlet includes a community of older adults who deserve recognition for their contributions to our communities and nation, and whereas the city of Hamlet recognizes that older adults are trailblazers advocating for themselves, their peers, and their communities, and are paving the way for future generations, and whereas the city of Hamlet is committed to raising awareness about issues facing older Americans and helping older individuals to thrive in communities of their choice for as long as possible, and whereas the city of Hamlet appreciates the value of inclusion and support in helping older adults successfully contribute to and benefit from their communities, and whereas the city of Hamlet can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting and engaging in activity, wellness, and social involvement, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living and ensuring community members can benefit from the contributions and experience of our older adults. Now, therefore, we, the city of Hamlet, do hereby proclaim Older Americans Awareness Month in May 2016 in Hamlet, North Carolina, and encourage all citizens to join with us and take time this month to acknowledge older adults and the people who serve them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to our community. This is the 10th day of May, 2016, Bill Bayless, Mayor of Hamlet. We do appreciate the things that our senior senator does in Hamlet. We're extremely proud of it and certainly appreciate the work that's going on down there. Additionally, we have Public Works Week. Whereas public work services provided in the city of Hamlet are an integral part of everyone's everyday life, and whereas the support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality of effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. Now, therefore, I, Bill Bayless, Mayor of the city of Hamlet, do hereby proclaim the week of May the 15th through the 21st, 2016, as Public Works Week in the city of Hamlet, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves...excuse me, with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public work professionals make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Signed, Bill Bayless, Mayor of Hamlet. The mayoral proclamation for International Firefighters' Day, 2016. Whereas firefighters dedicate their lives to the protection of life and property, and there are times that dedication is in the form of countless hours volunteered over many years, and whereas in all cases of a firefighter's dedication, there is a risk of the ultimate sacrifice of a firefighter's life, and whereas International Firefighters' Day is observed each May the 4th to recognize and thank the current and past firefighters for their contributions, and whereas International Firefighters' Day is a time where the world's community can recognize and honor the sacrifices that firefighters make to ensure that their communities and environment are as safe as possible. Now, therefore, I, Bill Bayless, Mayor of the city of Hamlet, hereby recognize the past firefighters who have died while serving our community, and remember the ones who have previously or currently dedicating their lives protecting the safety of all of us. Signed, Bill Bayless, Mayor of Hamlet. And I believe that our fire department attended the May 4th celebration or recognition in Raleigh. Am I correct on that? Am I correct on that? And everything went well. Okay, at this time, we'll move along to departmental reports. Fire chief, you have anything for us tonight?
I do, Mayor. Counsel, I was talking about the events of the past weekend. And Joe Thomas Sowell was officially inducted...
I think she wants you to go up to the...
Yeah, if you would, chief, please go up there. We can hear you here, but they can't hear you. Thank you.
Won't be long, and you can stay there when we get the new equipment in.
That's right. We could get traded today.
I know. Joe Thomas Sowell was officially inducted into the North Carolina Fallen Firefighters' Memorial up in Raleigh this past weekend. It was a very amazing event, to be honest with you. We had, the truck that he actually passed away on was the one we had been working on at the fire station, and we took it to Raleigh with us. It was second in the parade. It was lots of people there. A tremendous event, to be honest with you. It just moved me quite a bit. We had, it was several hours in the day, but everything was just, it was an amazing event. The citizens of Raleigh, they came out in mass numbers, really, to the event. We had news people there. Joe Sowell's wife was there, his kids were there, and they were very, very pleased with the entire event. In fact, they, his kids now, of course, are grown people, but they were just as happy as they could be about the entire thing. And it was just a very humbling thing for our department. I'd like to thank the city, because this was a city event, in my opinion. The city came together and made this happen, not just for the fire department, but for the entire city. And by the way, the state fire marshal mentioned the City of Hamlet and this event on a couple of different occasions when he did his speech up there. And so it's been broadcast to the entire state and to the country. We were well represented. Citizens of Hamlet have been by in numbers to see this truck. Special thanks to Billy Stubbs, Brian Carter, for their work. The city for making this possible. Jill for looking out for us, the city manager also. So it's been, it's been a joint effort. It's been a lot of work, but it's been an amazing event, to be quite honest with you, to be a part of. Our guys at the station worked very, very hard to get this done. And we were working on this truck up until the very last day, by the way, but it all came together, and it was a great event for us. But I'd just like to say it was an honor to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. We appreciate the way you've been going over there. Thank you so much. Police chief.
We've got a couple of bills, a member of the family, a member of the office, and business workers. We have a lot of individuals, you know, the tax collectors. We have a 19-year-old that was found dead in a red truck on Henderson Street. And we have a 78-year-old, retired law clerk, that suffered a medical emergency, heart attack in her automobile, just so he could have somebody on the flight to Charlotte. There's one member of his family, he's here from Scott and Ken, retired, I think, the police chief of Gibson. And a member of his family, a member of the community, who worked trying to save his life.
Anybody got any questions for chief? Jennifer, we're glad to have you on board. Do you have anything for us tonight? Okay, we're glad to have you on board with us. Thank you. Zach, do you have anything for us tonight, sir?
Zach, hurry up.
Mr. Stubbs, what do you got for us tonight?
Well, we have the American Council, a couple of ones, as driving shop, for my shift, talk to the town, get some safety equipment for us, so we can actually treat these folks.
I'm just glad that we were able to have this money left over at the end of the year, and there were several things that we could do to help out down there. It's been a big help to all of us, and makes me feel good that we're able to do that. Can't hear back there? Captain Goodman, did you have anything for us tonight? Okay, I was gonna give you an opportunity. Gail, do you have anything?
I would like to report that we have moved along the Moore County election. We have structured on Spring Street, 2.3, which has been done on the east shore, that's now being taken down, and I still want, we are now out of money for this year, so we will be waiting for next year. And also the AEP, the removal of the FBS, has concluded today. Should have all the paperwork tomorrow, they did the air quality test now today, so that they can complete it by tomorrow.
There you go. Jill, you have anything for us tonight? Appreciate what you're doing over there, keeping our finances straight. We've got plenty of money, so we appreciate that. Mr. Morpheus, did you have anything at this time? Mr. Abernathy, your turn.
I want to express some gratitude to the council and to staff for working so well together and making a lot of progress to help me put this budget together. I certainly want to thank our staff for making this city run so well in my absence while I was out of the office. I am genuinely appreciative of our department heads who do such a good job, and I can really depend on them. Where I'm sure there's plenty of other managers in the state that go on vacation, and they come back to a ton of nightmares. But yesterday morning was very nice, and I certainly want to thank our staff for doing such a good job and being so well behaved while I was gone.
We didn't know you were gone.
Oh, yeah.
We were worried about you.
I will have to say that our city clerk is at school this week.
That's right.
He's going to Advanced Clerk School, and we appreciate that, her doing that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're fine. I just wanted to send another reminder out to come out to Train Day this Saturday from 11:00 to 4:00, and also go to the fundraiser thereafter, I think from 5:00 to 8:00, to meet and greet Ashton Locklear and buy some food and participate in the fundraiser. I wanted to just give notice that Memorial Day is Monday, May 30th, and that city offices will be closed, but no changes to the garbage schedule have been made. And I also wanted to express some thanks to Zach Garner, our former IT director who is here tonight. He is taking a job with Moore County, but he is helping us somewhat in the interim. And I just wanted to thank him for doing such a good job and being such a good employee while he was here. And I also wanted to also wish Gary Green the best of luck as well, our museum manager. His last day will be Friday. And Gary has brought people downtown together in ways that I could not imagine. He has done such a wonderful job, and I commend him on his efforts. The relationship between the National Railroad Museum and the Hamlet Historic Depot have never been closer, and that's not just because of Gary, but things are going really well. And Gary did such a good job to just plan events, and I just want to wish him well in his future endeavors. That's all I have to report at this time.
Any questions for the manager? Okay. If not, we will move along with the comments, counsel. Start with Mr. Lindsay.
To follow up on Chief White, on YouTube, your video of your fire truck in Raleigh, it's N-C-F-F-F space 2016. That's N-C-F-F-F space 2016, and that posted on YouTube. That's how you search it, and you'll find it. Kind of neat, you got a good shot on there. Follow up on Mr. Bowie, anybody on Seaboard Festival, you can go to seabordfestival.com and get additional information. We have a new business in Hamlet for all us old people that Mr. Mayor Bayless recognized today, that's at Luke's Amaco up the street, and for the younger people, that's Tony Fluice's old place, but it's Hills Auto now. They do oil changes, front end alignments, brake work, car wash, wax and detailing, that kind of stuff. They started up, I think, in the last few weeks, I believe, but you might check them out. There's no gas service there, but they are doing, I guess, basic maintenance on vehicles. That's all I've got.
And he came from Manus Tire after a number of years working at Manus Tire, so I'm sure he'll get good service up there.
I believe Manus was bought out.
It was bought out by Snyder. Mr. McQueen.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Appreciate y'all going up there representing Hamlet and our community. My son enjoyed talking with y'all. He was there with the Wrightsville Beach Fire Department as well. Actually passed y'all, I guess you were with them Friday, headed that way with it on a trailer up there. It's a good honor there. Scott, over on McDonald Avenue where we talked about that graffiti on the street, that's still going on over there. I mean, probably chasing a needle in a haystack, but just let them know about it, because it's got to be somebody that lives in that area. This time, it was not anything vulgar or anything like that. Next, the budget, we all worked really hard on that. We had things we agreed on, things we disagreed on. At the end of the day, we came to pretty much a consensus that we need to go in the direction of give our employees things to work with. It had been a custom over the years that you get it as lean as you can, and then whenever the funds come in at the end and it's over what you expected, that money was put up in the account. And this council made a concerted effort to start trying to replace some of the equipment that we had, rather than let the money sit there. I'm glad that we've moved forward with doing a little bit better as far as estimating revenues and making the budget more accurate. Good job on that. This year's budget shows a considerable amount of time, energy, and efforts on behalf of this council. There's also over $200,000 that was not included on this year's budget, because as the mayor said already, we had been able to save some money. We had budgeted to spend around $800,000 of the fund balance in order to balance the previous year's budget. Revenues came in better, good fiscal responsibility of the employees and all. We didn't use the $800,000, and we had a couple hundred thousand that we were able to purchase some things with. And by purchasing some of this stuff at that time with some of that money that we had, we actually saved, for instance, on a knuckle boom, Billy's connections, saved $23,000 by being, and to me, that's been a good store to the money. We don't need our employees out here with 40-year-old equipment, 30-year-old equipment and things like that. So I'm really pleased with that. Also, with some of that money that we had left, we were able to budget some money to take care of the AMP building across the street. It's been in Islaire for many years. I don't have any idea when that building shut down, and everybody knows, once you shut down something, it just goes down, and the property just looks horrible. Couple of years ago, previous council made the decision to acquire that property in questionable ways. And a couple of years later, we're still paying for that. We're gonna spend a good chunk of money trying to get that building tore down, so hopefully we can come up with something to do with that property, make a little bit of money, recoup some of that money, and ease some of that sting a little bit. I can remember seeing folks coming in here telling us about they went to Lowe's and priced stuff that they can make it into this, make it into that. I just, you know, we're gonna take care of that era, as far as that goes. I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Master G.
No.
Okay. Mr. Moore? All right, Mr. Bowie?
Not a thing, sir. Roll on.
Let's see, where is that?
There was. One more thing.
Let's see, I've got, no.
Just one quick thing. I would like to thank Marcus and all the staff, I don't know who else helped, but getting with the city attorney. I don't know how many ordinances and how many issues that we have looked at over the past couple of years, but it's got to be up around 20 or 25 things that we've actually corrected that was wrong, implemented that we did not have, or changed that we needed to change. And I just want to, again, I've said that a couple of times, but it seems like every couple of months, something comes up that we've found out that we were not doing correctly, and now we're doing it correctly. I appreciate you.
Okay, I only got a couple of things. The HBDA Business of the Month is the second time around, and we're glad to have those people to go by and see them, visit with them. I'd like to remind you again, if you've got any recipes, please go by the Hamlet library up there and pick up the forms and fill them out, have any old photographs. Not only would the ladies like to see it, but I think Mr. Lindsay would probably be interested in them too. He's into that and looking into a lot of the history of Hamlet. Linda and I had the opportunity to go to the city manager's wedding, and it was an exciting wedding, and extremely well, but there has to be something said about it. He got married to Cannonball, fact.
That's correct.
It was. It's been renovated, and it was very nice. It was a good DNU, but we're happy for both of them. That's my comments for tonight. At this time, item number 22, we need a motion to go into closed session for General Statute 143, 318, 11, A, 3, 5, and 6, for attorney-client privilege, property acquisition, and personnel matters.
So move.
I have a motion.
So.
Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?[1736.92]